Recording in progress.
Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
(Music) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishna Bag people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Bada Watahmi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wendat nation Huron who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognizing the enduring presence of indigenous peoples on this land. We are committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. We will begin today with the confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the City Council meeting dated May the 3rd, 2023 have been circulated. Are there any corrections from members of council? Seeing none, these minutes are adopted as printed and circulated. We will move on to awards and recognition. Recognition of the I Love Barrie winners, and the presentation is going to be here this evening. So, the city's 7th Annual I Love Barrie Contest took place earlier this year, welcoming entries from local students to share why they love Barrie. We'd like to congratulate this year's winners and celebrate their talent, passion, and love for our city. So, I'm pleased to share this year's I Love Barrie winners. Our artwork winner is Leila Maxwell, who's in grade four at Sister Catherine Donnelly Catholic School. And our class winner is Mrs. McDonald's Grade 2-3 class from St. Bernadette Catholic School. The winners' names have been shared in this, in the cities this week in Barrie, feature in the Barrie Advance, and also received an I Love Barrie prize pack. Mrs. McDonald and her class were not able to be here tonight, but they did receive a pizza lunch party as part of the prize. Our artwork winner, Leila Maxwell and her family are in attendance tonight, so I'd like to call upon Leila Maxwell to join me at the podium for the presentation of the award.[269.97][269.97](Applause)
Leila, on behalf of the city of Barrie, we want to recognize your talent and your work that you put in and your effort you put in, and we wanted to present you with a certificate here this evening, as well as a gift to say thank you as a 2023 I Love Barrie Contest winner. So, here on behalf of City Council in the city of Barrie, congratulations, and thank you so much for putting in your artwork as well. Would you like to say anything? No? Would you like to do a photo? I think you're, you guys want to turn around here? Wonderful. Congratulations, Leila.[353.52][353.52](Applause)
Members of council, Councilor Nixon and I were at a Simcoe Youth Choir event the other night where I let everybody in the audience know what I see to be happening more and more. It's that my job is to present people far more talented than myself with awards, and it's really neat to see the talents that we have in our community. So, Leila, thank you again so much for your contribution. We now will go on to the recognition of the Barrie Royals Under Ten Girls Basketball Team on winning the gold medal at the 2023 Provincial Championship. I'd like to congratulate the Under Ten Barrie Royal Girls Basketball Team on a fantastic season, and I'll now invite coaches Mike Dominelli, Paul Zyla, and Jocelyn Huben to the podium to say a few words about the season and hand out the certificates.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone. Uh, I did not honestly prepare anything, but I just want to say congratulations to these girls on an amazing season. Um, eight of these girls started this season without playing any basketball, okay? Just driveway basketball, and now they're here provincial champs. So, so proud of them. I think it was 32 and 2 was the record in a provincial championship, which has only been done four times in Royals history since 1985. So, congrats, girls, congrats, coaches.[472.21][472.21](Applause)
Sure. Sure. Yeah? You want it? Me? Sure. Okay. Okay, first is Harper.[492.47][492.47](Applause) Harper Batson, sorry. London, London Huben.[503.47][503.47](Applause) Sage Barrowclaw.[512.29][512.29](Applause) Sophia La Greco.[522.82][522.82](Applause) Sophia Knapp. Emerson Thomas. Josephine Zyla.[550.79][550.79](Applause) Sophia Dominelli.[558.32][558.32](Applause) Isabella Ashwood.[564.64][564.64](Applause) Claire Gallagher.[571.52][571.52](Applause) She's got multiple medals on her, she's great. Yep. Lila Simpson.[584.28][584.28](Applause) Haley Bartlett.[593.24][593.24](Applause) And Coach Jocelyn Huben.[600.64][600.64](Applause) And Paul Zyla. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you guys like to do a photo up here with the team?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Girls, come down.
We need you on our team.[623.67][623.67](Laughter) Everybody get in front of the adults. One of the adults in the back.
Face this way.
Face this way. Yeah, it's kind of be, so why don't we have?
We have to back up a little bit.
Guys, we, we have four sitting, four on your knees, four standing. Okay? But let's go back to that. Four sitting, four on your knees, four standing.
But face.
Facing the man in the pot.
What do you mean, sit?
Move up, move up. See, you get up there.
I'll see you, Ken. Guys, see? Guys, see everybody? Can you see everybody?
Congratulations.
Thank you.[705.96][705.96](Applause)
So, congratulations again to our Barrie Royals Provincial Champions, uh, and thank you for sharing that with us this evening. It's always really neat, uh, for members of council to see the young people of our city achieve so much. So, uh, congratulations and, and thank you again. Um, it is a riveting evening this evening, but I'm sure that there is better things that you folks have to do than sit here. So, uh, we'll take a 30-second break and allow you to, to, uh, to exit if you like. Well, thank you. That concludes the awards and recognition for this evening. Uh, we have no reports from officers or deputations. We do have, uh, tax applications. So, Deputy Mayor Thompson, do you have a motion regarding the tax applications this evening?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, the tax application to council for cancellation, reduction, and addition dated May 17th, 2023.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Nixon that the tax applications to council for cancellation, reduction, or additions dated May 17th, 2023, that the list of applications of council for cancellation, reduction, or additions dated May 17th, 2023 submitted by the Treasurer in the amount of $28,027.67 be approved. Madam Clerk, have you received any objections to this list of applications for cancellation, reduction, or addition of taxes? And are there any comments or questions from members of council?
No, Mayor Nettle. I have not received any, um, but I'm going to confirm with the Treasurer that he has not received any either.
I have not received any.
Perfect. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, I'll now take the vote. Those in favor? And it's approved. The motion is carried. There are no communications, so we're going to move on to committee reports. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section A of General Committee Report dated May 8th, 2023, as circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated May 8th, 2023, as circulated, be received. 23-G-106, the Confidential Education and Training Session Diversity Equity Inclusion Workshop. Are there any questions or comments with regards to Section A? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be received. 23-G-107, the Report of the Affordability Committee dated April 26th, 2023. 23-G-108, the Report of the Community Safety Committee dated May the 3rd, 2023. Are there any comments or questions with regards to the reports to be received? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, is circulated, be adopted. 23-G-109, the Investigation of an All-Way Stop at Innisville and Marshall Street in Ward 8. 23-G-110, Rotary Club of Barrie COVID-19 Heroes and Memorial Garden in Sunnydale Park in Ward 4. 23-G-111, Report Back on 2022 Busking Program Pilot and Recommendations for the 2023 Pilot. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Counselor Corser.
Yes, I'd like to comment on Section B, Item 23-G-10110, for the Rotary Club of Barrie COVID-19 Heroes and Memorial Garden in Sunnydale Park. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Rotary Club of Barrie for their generosity in bringing forth a proposal for COVID-19 Heroes and Memorial Garden as a permanent tribute to all those that have been affected by the pandemic and to recognize the tireless efforts of the local health and frontline heroes. Uh, the last few years have been a time of upheaval, sorrow, uncertainty, and hope, and if this motion passes, the COVID-19 Heroes and Memorial Garden, well, I hope that will create a place of solace, reflection, and healing for our entire community.
Thank you, Counselor Corser. Are there any other questions or comments with regards to the items inside of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be received. This is 23-G-112, the Proposed 2023 Development Charge Bylaw on Community Benefit Charges Strategy, the City of Barrie, dated May 10th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the public meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's approved. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-113, Safety in School Zones. I'll note, uh, that there was, uh, some information sent out by Ms. Banfield today, uh, with regards to some of the, uh, safety and/or lack thereof, uh, in, uh, some of the school zones, and I know that was part of the discussion last week. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the invitation, uh, to the school board to come to committee? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor? And it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section E of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Nixon, that Section E of the General Committee Report dated May 10th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-114, Funding Request for Duckworth Street New Transmission Water Main and Row Expansion, Words 1 and 2. Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Um, as consistent with last week, while the question, uh, while the project in question is not directly in front of the properties owned by my parents and I, it's about two and a half blocks away, and just because 23-G-114 is requesting an increase in budget in the millions, out of an abundance of caution, I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Counselor Morales. Uh, Madam Clerk, has that been noted?
Yes, Mayor Nettle, it has.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it carries. That concludes our committee reports. There's no deferred business this evening. We'll move into direct motions. Counselor Harvey, I believe that you have a direct motion for this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson, um, and this is in relation to the Horsepower Sports and Entertainment Group Facility Use and Concessions Agreement for the Sadlin Arena, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute an extension to the existing facility use and concession agreements on the same terms and conditions with Horsepower Sports and Entertainment Group, owners of the Barrie Colts, for a period of nine months for the use of the Sadlin Arena in a form acceptable to the Director of Legal Services and the General Manager of Community and Corporate Services.
Thank you. It's moved by Counselor Harvey and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson, that the Horsepower Sports and Entertainment Group Facility Use and Concessions Agreement for the Sadlin Arena, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute an extension to the existing facility use and concession agreements on the same terms and conditions with Horsepower Sports and Entertainment Group, owners of the Barrie Colts, for a period of nine months for the use of the Sadlin Arena in a form acceptable to the Director of Legal Services and General Manager of Community and Corporate Services. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the extension? Yes, Counselor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Maybe to you, if you're, as part of the extension discussion, um, as a season ticket holder, one thing I've noticed with concessions there is cash only. Would that be part of the discussion, that they could add a cashless option, or is that something we have to put to the motion, or just add to the discussion when you have it?
Uh, with regards to the discussion overall, with the, uh, with the, the lease for the Barrie Colts Horsepower Sports Entertainment, uh, that is, that's not on the floor tonight. This is just an extension of what the current is. Uh, certainly, um, I think our, our public services heard your, uh, your question and can include that in, uh, any of the discussions and negotiations going forward, and I would note that, uh, I believe, and CEO Prowse, if you can confirm, uh, or correct me, uh, that the actual lease negotiations are part of a confidential, uh, motion usually. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mayor Nettle, they would, uh, the terms and conditions under which we would renegotiate would be confidential.
Thank you. So, uh, we can certainly have that discussion, uh, if and when a, uh, different lease comes back in the next nine months.
That's great. I'd promise to buy more popcorn if it was, if I got this. Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions or comments with regards to the motion for a nine-month extension, uh, for Barrie, uh, for the Sadlin Arena with Horsepower Sports Entertainment? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that carries. We now have a direct motion without notice, Options to Address Chronic Homelessness in the City of Barrie. Uh, Counselor Hamilton, I believe you have that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nettle. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Morales, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning options to address chronic homelessness in the city of Barrie.
It's moved by Counselor Hamilton and seconded by Counselor Morales, that a motion without notice, Options to Address Chronic Homelessness in the City of Barrie, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning the options to address chronic homelessness in the city of Barrie. This motion requires a two-thirds majority. Excuse me. All those in favor? And that carries. Counselor Hamilton, I believe you have the next motion as well?
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mayor Nettle. It is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Morales, direct motion, Options to Address Chronic Homelessness in the City of Barrie. That number one, that the chief administrative officer consider/utilize the following options to address chronic homelessness and enhance public safety in the city of Barrie. A, request funding from the province of Ontario for additional financial support for the Rapid Access Addiction Medicine Clinic to provide more beds and to increase the hours of operation or provide, and for a similar organization that provides long-term counseling and treatment. B, approve funding for the following: a family reunification fund to pay for the transportation costs and help reunite individuals with families or support groups. One B, number two, the operation of a shuttle service for individuals released from the Central North Correctional Center. Three, a cooling and warming center for at-risk individuals and the provision of a daily, of daily meal programs that are currently being offered on public lands and in public parks over multiple years. Four, to the Salvation Army or a similar organization to support a lunch program. And five, for food security programs through local agencies to reduce the needs associated with panhandling. One C, request permanent funding from the province of Ontario and the County of Simcoe for the County of Simcoe's Mobile Outreach Pilot Program in downtown Barrie, if deemed to be successful by the city of Barrie and the County of Simcoe. D, changes to the city's bylaws, protocols, and processes to prohibit the use or distribution of tents or tarps in public parks or in public lands without a permit, prohibit the distribution of food and grocery products in public spaces without the use of a permit, and reduce the time required to address camping in parks and storage of goods in parks or public spaces. E, methods to prohibit the payment to panhandlers on city streets, intersections, and highway ramps. F, the placement of signs on city off-ramps to discourage panhandling or financial support thereof and encouraging donations to local social service agencies. G, work with the County of Simcoe and province of Ontario on ways to build more supportive housing for community members experiencing adverse mental health and addictions, or addictions. H, appeal to the County of Simcoe for funding to help individuals transition from unemployment to employment through training opportunities. I, schedule a public meeting to be held at the Community Safety Committee regarding the chronic, chronic homelessness, addictions, and mental health supports in the city of Barrie. J, have staff apply for any provincial or federal funding opportunities available to support the options outlined in this motion. Part two, that funding of up to $825,000 per annum for two years from the reinvestment reserve be made available to any of the fund options detailed in Paragraph 1 that are undertaken as required. Part three, that if necessary, the chief administrative officer be authorized to waive the city's purchasing bylaw to award any items or services required to undertake the options listed in Paragraph 1. And finally, four, that the chief administrative officer provide quarterly updates to the Community Safety Committee regarding the effectiveness of the options that are undertaken as part of this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. I am going to read through this because it's a, uh, it's a long motion, and it'll give, uh, give folks a second crack at it, uh, as it's being, uh, being read out, and I'm sure there'll be, uh, you know, some, some discussion around the table. This is a direct motion, Options to Address Chronic Homelessness in the City of Barrie. One, that the chief administrative officer consider/ utilize the following options to address chronic homelessness and enhance public safety in the city of Barrie. One A, request funding for the- request funding from the province of Ontario for, one, additional financial support for the Rapid Access Addiction Medicine Clinic to provide more beds and to increase the hours of operation, or provide, two, for a similar organization that provides long-term counselling and treatment. B, approve funding for the following: a family reunification fund to pay for the transportation costs and help reunite individuals with families or support groups. Two, the operation of a shuttle service for individuals released from the Central North Correctional Centre. Three, a cooling and warming centre for at-risk individuals and the provision of daily meal programs that are currently being offered on public lands and in public parks over multiple years. Four, to the Salvation Army or a similar organization to support a lunch program. Five, for food security programs through local agencies to reduce the needs associated with panhandling. C, request the permanent funding from the province of Ontario and the County of Simcoe for the County of Simcoe's mobile outreach pilot program in downtown Berry, if deemed to be successful by the city of Berry and the County of Simcoe. D, changes to the city's bylaws, protocols and processes to, one, prohibit the use or distribution of tents or tarps in public parks or on public lands without a permit. Two, to prohibit the distribution of food and grocery products in public spaces without the use of a permit. And three, to reduce the time required to address camping and parks and storage of goods in parks or public spaces. E, methods to prohibit the payment to panhandlers on city streets, intersections and highway ramps. F, the placement of signs on city off-ramps to discourage panhandling or financial support thereof, and encouraging donations to local social service agencies. G, work with the County of Simcoe and province of Ontario on ways to build more supportive housing for community members experiencing adverse mental health or addictions. H, appeal to the County of Simcoe for funding to help individuals transition from unemployment to employment through training opportunities. I, schedule a public meeting to be held at the Community Safety Committee regarding chronic homelessness, addictions and mental health supports in the city of Berry. J, have staff apply for any provincial or federal funding opportunities available to support the options outlined in this motion. Paragraph two, that funding of up to $825,000 per annum for two years from the reinvestment reserve be made available to any, to fund any of the options detailed in paragraph one that are undertaken as required. Three, that if necessary, the chief administrative officer be authorized to waive the city's purchasing bylaw to award any items or services required to undertake the options listed in paragraph one. And paragraph four, that the chief administrative officer provide quarterly updates to the Community Safety Committee regarding the effectiveness of the options that are undertaken as part of this motion. And Counselor Hamilton, would you like to begin with your comments?
Yes, thank you. And through you, Mayor Nettle, I know that motion is a lot to digest, so I would like to spend just a minute setting the context as to why we put forward this direct motion this evening. I don't think any of us are surprised by the fact that we are dealing with a chronic homelessness crisis in Berry, as are many other municipalities across the province. And in part, this is due from a lack of affordable housing, which, again, we prioritize as a city. Last week, staff held the Affordable Housing Symposium. We have steps in place right now to update our affordable housing strategy. I wish these affordable housing units could be done overnight. But the very real reality is that right now we have 350 to 400 individuals within our city limits that identify themselves as homeless. And that data is actually, was taken prior to COVID, so we can all presume that those numbers are probably a lot higher now. And I've said this before around this table, but 70, 80% of those individuals that are unhoused attribute this to being, due to the fact that they suffer from mental health, addiction issues and/or substance abuse. So, we know, we've got to start taking a harder look at how we are addressing chronic homelessness in Berry, but also, more importantly, what we're doing to treat the root cause of chronic homelessness. But equally as important is we have to be aware of some of the effects that chronic homelessness is having on our community and on our residents at large. I think being in this seat for many of us has created a new level of awareness in terms of how the safety and the reasonable enjoyment of city assets is being impacted by some of the behavior attributed to segments of the homeless population. We're all hearing stories, I think too many stories, stories from people who are taking their dogs for walks in our city parks and ending up with needles in paws. Stories from parents whose teenagers are accessing trails within public spaces and that are being approached by people within encampments and getting lured into tents. We've heard firsthand from businesses that are shutting down due to decreased foot traffic and a perceived fear of our downtown core. We're hearing stories, more and more stories of trespassing, home invasion, vandalism, aggressive behavior in public spaces, overdosing on front lawns, stabbings, the list goes on. And I'm sure you're all becoming aware with these stories and experiences that our residents are expressing. Most recently, we have heard that the Berry Minor Baseball has canceled all diamond permits at Queen's Park due to a presence of individuals that are participating in drug use and break-ins in the washroom and canteen facility. The Berry District Girls Youth Baseball have also declined to book this field for the same reasons. This is not okay. We cannot continue to accept this as being okay. I think the motion in front of us all tonight introduces a very balanced approach to address both of these issues, to deal with some of the immediate concerns that we are all hearing and facing by residents with respect to safety, while also proposing some alternative solutions to address the issues and root causes of chronic homelessness. So, I'm just going to finish by saying that there is not one solution here. If this was easy, we would have done it already, as would other municipalities across the province. So, this is going to take a concerted effort by everyone, by council, by staff, by the county, by Berry Police Services, by social services that are being offered within our city. We have to start exploring all options, and that's why we're presenting the direct motion this evening. And I also want to commend staff, because they are looking at other municipalities as well that are facing the same challenges we are, Guelph, Wellington, St. Thomas, Deffern County. I know that we're all keen to adjust our efforts, not only based on our own results, but also the results that other municipalities are facing these same challenges as well. So, I'll leave it at that, as I know, I'm assuming there's quite a few comments and questions tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Hamilton. I have a list. If you're not on it, then you need to tell me now. I have Counsel Morales, Counsel Nagusi, I have Counsel Rittma, Counsel Congle, Counsel Nixon. Is there anyone else who'd like to make comment? Counsel Harvey, you're now on the list. So, I will go to Counselor, and Counselor Corser. So, I will now go to Counsel Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Here's what I know regarding these concerns that we're having now, a month ago, a year ago. This is not the same Berry that I grew up in. This, unfortunately, is not the Berry I remember. And here's the thing, I'm not old enough to be wishful for a yesteryear that is biased. A lot of people sometimes wish for the past. It's the idea of being nostalgic. I'm still young enough that it, it was only 10, 15 years ago. The Berry I remember is the Berry that my parents immigrated to this country and chose to raise me in. It didn't have me in fear of having my car broken into. Specifically, I want to address one instance. Mayor Nettle, I went to a movie last night, and when my phone buzzed while I was in the movie, it said, "Your iPad is now out of range on Commerce Drive." My city device, and I rushed out of the movie theater thinking my car got broken into. I've never been in a situation where I've, if I've left the device in my car, I'm like, that I wanted to rush out. That is the reality I'm in. I know everybody's reality's a little bit different. The Berry I remember didn't have on and off ramps at the highway that constantly have had people panhandling, which creates unsafe conditions for both them and the people in the cars. I'm aware that a large town growing into a small city brings with it challenges that are inevitable, and I, for one, have been, have embraced that growth. But accepting and embracing growth does not mean surrendering to not feeling safe in your own city. For those reasons, I'll be voting in favor of the motion before us tonight. I'm aware that this is a widespread problem. We've heard about other counties and cities, so let's not pretend that it's only Berry, but, and that there's no magical solution. But as Counsel Hamilton alluded to, I'm extremely confident that the initiatives in this motion, and specifically leaning on my eight years on city council and seeing the problem only get worse, that there's absolutely no reason why I can justify voting against trying new, bolder approaches.
Thank you, Counsel Morales. I have Counsel Nagusi next.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I support this motion. As some of you, you might know, I'm in the social service industry, and having a verstand experience working with, you know, frontline, I have had the privilege to engage with some of the most venerable communities in our city. Within these encounters, I have come across numerous remarkable stories. And one of the most common and hurt touching one is that almost everyone miss their families, friends and loved ones. And I know some of these individuals are not originally from Berry. Pretty much, you can find from all over Ontario. And assisting them to return to their families is a great idea. And I sincerely believe that this motion holds a potential permanent solution to facilitate the reunification of these folks with their families and loved ones. So, I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nagusi. And I'll go to Counsel Rittma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this motion as well. I think with a bit of reluctance, but I think exactly as Counselor Hamilton mentioned, when, when we heard about the Berry Baseball Group, I called you, and I said, you know, "We really need to do something because this is no longer acceptable." And it hasn't been acceptable for a long time, and certainly in Ward One, we have the same issues. So, it's not only Ward Two, it's others as well. I'm very much supporting, in support of part A of the motion, which calls on funding from the province. I think it should go further, actually, because I think we really need to call on the province to increase ODSP, for starters, and some of the other support programs, because if you follow the money, you can know that nobody can survive on ODSP. And, and now that Mr. Prowse's title has been changed to the Chief Social Services Officer, I think that that will, that is one of the items that I think he needs to pursue as well. I, I told you that I have some reluctance. I have reluctance because I think some of the items are maybe not workable or may not be, work out as well as we might hope. But I do think there's a lot to get started on, and that, if we start on them, maybe we'll get somewhere. I'm very supportive of having a public meeting at the Community Safety Committee. I think that will bring in a lot of interest from, from the public, and we will probably get some good ideas along the way. I would also hope that we will invite Simcoe County and representatives of the province and also the federal government to that meeting, so that I think we can have a more fulsome discussion. This is a complicated problem. If we, if there was an easy answer to it, we'd have had it long ago. And it needs a lot of people to be involved in order to start to fix it and to get to some of the root causes. And I, I think that Mr. Prowse really needs to start to build a big tent and invite a lot of people into it to have this discussion. But I do think that doing some of these things, we can, we can move the needle a little bit. But it takes a lot more than what's on this paper, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rittma. Counsel Congle.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. So, in reviewing it, I think for some similar comments, again, a lot of the items touched on this, we've been circling in conversations about who's responsible for what. So, I don't, I'm not going to get into wordsmithing or drilling down into the details. I do look forward to staff bringing back what's possible. At first blush of it, of course, it's much broader, I think, as Counsel Rittma was talking about. And interesting enough, you know, a large conversation that we were having at the Board of Public Health this morning around food security, housing homelessness, but also income, and really that, looking at kind of some root situations. I guess a couple of pieces that stand out to me, I will support it as it currently stands, because I, I think it's good just to get this moving. While there's some things that I'm not completely comfortable with, I'm willing for that to come back to a, a conversation around positive and negative consequences, what's possible, how is it being interpreted. But one piece I'd like to just point out was under, and I guess I'll maybe I'll reframe this, and staff might not have the current timing, but from a direction, not knowing which takes precedent, so the timing of when I, the public meeting at the Community Safety Committee versus the quarterly updates. And so, I'm sure you'll probably be getting a lot of questions, but just being clear about which, how soon those will be scheduled, and then making sure there's lots of public opportunity. And then my only other comment would be, now that we're really pushing into committee structures versus town hall structures, any pros or cons to how residents can engage in, in actually sharing feedback and asking questions? And is that best supported at a committee or, or perhaps an additional town hall if there's a bit more of a, more, more freedom in the structure of having the conversation? I will share that from a Ward Three, feedback from residents because of the 400 ramp, particularly at the intersection just north of Grove and Bayfield, while individuals do speak highly around a compassionate approach, often it is always framed in safety of everyone involved about the slowing of traffic and what's happening there. And so, I think that that would be welcome. The one piece that speaks to changes to the city's bylaw, so this is one D, item two, to prohibit the distribution of food and grocery products in public spaces without the use of a permit. So, I struggled with this a bit, and then through some brief clarity, if it helps those kind of, without having this in hand publicly, to understand that, I think the intention here is really focused on how do we redirect that. So, we still don't want to see food go to waste or food rescue opportunities, but we do want to see that done in a way that is a safe handling of food, and it's directional to agencies that can get it into the hands of individuals that can use it. So, that's great, and I like that. I'm hoping some of that type of clarity can come out during the town hall. I mean, the other pieces really are part of when staff bring back perhaps effectiveness of options, whether or not there's any framing of that to understand from staff and/or from colleagues sitting at Simcoe County Council, what's happening in tandem. So, how soon would bylaws go into effect after they maybe identified what changes would take place? And in addition to that, how do we communicate that well? Because we've got a lot of people, I think, who've outreach through the pandemic on their own or through different agencies informally, that probably want to know they're not making a misstep in trying to help, and how do we best make sure that people are guided around where we can redirect some of these resources? Those are my first blush comments to that. Very, very keen to see what can happen here. And I think, you know, while we might talk about different situations that are happening, you know, always framing this in, you know, aspects of our city that are very safe, opportunities for us to be connected in safe ways with resources. And my compliment, I think, in particular to this, which I was not expecting when I heard about the framing of it, is the warming and cooling centres. That has been one that has been a great frustration, where we are always sitting down with, who's going to fund this, who owns it? And I know this is presenting a stepping into a space we don't have to be operating in. And I actually really respect the appetite of council to take this on. In the meantime, I believe it was county council that identified $100,000 in the budget to address that. We heard from our frontline, if we're talking about staffing it appropriately, $300,000 a year. So, I don't know how far the budget will go that we set. So, I do like the active, proactive approach to wherever else we can get capital dollars or grant funding dollars to supplement this. But I would say, without having certain priorities, that would be one I'm hoping is prioritized, so we're so we're meeting a bit more of an immediate need that's coming up this summer. And those are all my comments.
Thank you, Counselor Kangal. And I have now Counselor Nixon.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. As I was leaving here yesterday after the mayor's task force meeting and driving home, I, I remembered a few months ago, actually, you were with me, we had a breakfast function to attend for a former councillor and federal member of parliament at Harper. And at that breakfast, I got chatting to a few other people at the table. And, and the point of the conversation was how things have changed in Barry and especially downtown. And, and one of the people at the table we were talking to is a fellow who's always been known as Mike the Barber. Mike had a barber shop in Barry next to the theaters for forever, you know? And I made the point, I said, you know, it's, things have changed so much. And I said, I remember back, you know, when I first got here in the early eighties, believe it or not, as a young child, the, I said, we had one guy in Barry. We had one guy who was always kind of strolling up and down Dunlop. He'd spend his afternoons in Fred Grant Square back then, before Meridian. And everybody in town knew him. And Mike said, oh yeah, Larry, you know? And I said, exactly. I said, you know, the people that lived here then, not only were they aware of the kind of, the single person, you know, suffering from homelessness and some mental health issues, but most people knew his name. And, and most people helped. And, you know, he always got a free pass from the theaters just to be able to come in and on a hot day and watch a movie and stay cool and in the winter, stay warm. And then we look at today, it's just an incredible change. I mean, it's just night and day, and it's obviously most cities in Canada and North America in the world. But I think the one thing that hasn't changed is, for the most part, the residents of Barry are caring compassionate people. They do want to help. They, they do understand. Unfortunately, many have reached the point where they no longer feel they can visit a park. They stroll downtown and/or stop at a traffic light without fearing for safety, their safety or being subjected to unwelcome requests for money. As Counselor Hamilton said, businesses and homeowners have seen a huge increase in theft and vandalism, open drug use and trespassing. And as a council, as a municipality, there's, there's only so much we, we can do. I think this motion is addressing pretty much all of the things that we can do. And, and I'm glad that we're heading in that direction. I think that it's a very broad motion with many points. I think that, I'm going to say that not everyone in, in this city is going to agree with every point. I think that probably not everyone at this table is going to agree with every point. But we are working in the right direction, and I'm glad to see that. You know, the, as they say, it's, it's not the perfect solution. There's a dozen initiatives in there, but I believe we found a balance equally between assistance and setting reasonable limits for those impacted. So I, I definitely will support it.
Thank you, Counselor Nixon. Next, I have Counselor Harvey and then Counselor Corser.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I too will support this. By reading through it, it does seem like it's a very well thought out motion. Like, I mean, obviously, people are going to have varying opinions, whether it's perfect or close to perfect, but it, like Counselor Nixon just said, it's a step in the right direction. We have to do something because like even just this past weekend, several of us were down on the waterfront for an event, and we witnessed firsthand what's going on. And it's not the first time I've seen it unfortunately. And like, I mean, obviously, certain drugs are legal nowadays, so sitting there with a bong is not against the law anymore. But when you're, when you've got people sitting off to the side and they're cooking drugs ready to use needles, and you've got kids in parks right nearby, we've got a problem. Because I don't think any of us should ever say that that's acceptable. And that's where hopefully, with some of this that's contained within this motion, we'll assist people to get out of that cycle. Offer people the help, sometimes maybe even coerce people into that help, because sometimes, obviously due to mental health issues and stuff, people don't necessarily know the, the path that they need to take to be able to break the cycle that they're currently in. And unfortunately, there's no laws that force you to be able to do that either. But hopefully, with some of this, we'll be able to show people in a caring compassionate way that there's a way to break that cycle. Because even just coming into Dunlop, driving down Dunlop Street for visitors coming in from the 400, one of the first signs you see as you're getting close to our downtown is advertising a methadone clinic. Right off the hop, you're, you're painting your city as you've got a drug problem. So even something as simple as that, I don't think is exactly the, the advertising that, that we as a city want, nor does any other city in this province want. And like, I mean, I've had a few people that I know that have grown up in this city, no longer live here, and when they have come back for a short visit because they've got some errands to run or whatever, they've reached out to me going like, what the heck has happened to this place? This is not the city that I grew up in 15, 20 years ago. And like, I've been here for 24 years, and I know it really has taken, taken a turn for the worst in certain areas. And we need to do something. We can't just sit and allow the same cycle to continue to spiral. Because really, all we're doing is throwing a bunch of money at various resources to ensure that they can continue to survive, but we're not actually assisting them in breaking that cycle. So I'm hopeful that some of this will assist those to be able to help break the cycle. And a key piece in this too is the, the family reunification. Because without having those family supports and those people that you care for and trust with their opinions on the situation that you are in, it makes it difficult for some to be able to listen to people. And like, I mean, sometimes it sounds like a bit of a sounding board, and, and that's where I'm hoping that some of this reunification and, and allowing people to get back with their families and, and not have to worry that, oh, I don't have the couple hundred bucks to get me wherever I need to get. It's probably the best couple hundred bucks this council will ever spend to assist people to be able to get back with their families. And I'm hopeful that our resources within the city are on board with this too, because I think that's a critical piece here. We need to have all of, all of the current supports that are in this city to also be on board with this. And we all need to be on the train, and the train needs to be moving the same direction. Because if we've got too many different strategies that are going to be doing different things or being counterproductive to a successful outcome for these people, I think that will be problematic. So I'm hoping that all of our resources do come to the table at this public meeting, and that there's some good dialogue, so that way, as a group, we can all work together for that common goal. And I'll, I'll leave my comments at that, but I definitely do support this. And I think in reading this, it, it is very well thought out strategy to take that first couple of steps forward.
Thank you, Counselor Harvey. Counselor Corser.
I, this is a really big motion forward and trying to digest it all. I think this is, since I've at least been in the chair, this is the biggest thing that's come forth and probably the most challenging for me because I want to, there's so many questions and trying to wrap my head around all this. I do remember Counselor Nixon, the gentleman in which you refer, I did not know his name was Larry. So I, I've seen the changes in our community. I've seen the mental health issues particularly, that, that is so worrisome and, and it's, it's difficult. I said that I would never raise my son in a bubble, and so I've always tried to be open about such things, like I've taken him to the Busby Center and different things. But some of the things I have seen goes beyond what an eight-year-old should witness. And to have that conversation and try to explain it, because it's not just unhoused people. It is people with deep, deep challenges, problems, and issues that need help. So I do have some questions on just about every single line. I am going to support this because I think it's, working through each point on the motion, I think that we can come to a balanced support after conversations with our community partners and with people around the table. I do have issues, I, I, with item 1D, but I think that that is something like, will the supports be available? How will that play out in, in actual motion once it's put in play? I think that needs to be balanced in conversations surrounding that to support people, to make sure that they have a place, that there are supports in the community. But again, I, I will support this and looking forward to dialogue to so many different points because I know there's going to be a lot of our community partners that are coming, kind of come into this. And I know that it is, we are not social workers. We are not qualified to make these kind of decisions. And I'm really looking forward to bringing together all community partners to help fill this out, to put more meat on the bone, if you will, for each point and how it can be well balanced within our community. And that's all I have. But I will support this going right now as it is printed.
Thank you, Counselor Corser. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Yeah, there's a lot here and really appreciated hearing the comments from colleagues around the horseshoe. It's, and I do reflect as well, and just like Counselor Rittma, when I heard about Queens Park and Barry Manner Baseball and being alumni, like Counselor Morales, wow, you, you are not wanting to play at our downtown park, which used to be the place you wanted to play. It was a place where, wow, I'm playing at Queens Park, that's exciting. And one thing, in connecting it to our homeless, many years ago, the Wrinkled Warriors, a wonderful group of baseball enthusiasts, used to play, I think it was every Wednesday with the members from the Busby Street Center. And Mandy Hilliard used to bring those groups together. So can you imagine the difference where today we're saying, our community doesn't want to play baseball because of our marginalized population, when once upon a time, not once upon a time, years ago, they actually played together with a group of senior retired men who love baseball, they played together. It was incredible. So I used to go there, it was a great way to do outreach for homeless people, so I used to do homeless outreach. So I would go there to play baseball, not to play baseball, but to make comment, to connect with somebody who was homeless. They would then trust you, that's, that guy's not a bad guy, he played baseball, maybe he will help me get housing or income support or see a doctor. So it's really disheartening as a Barry kid to see that Queens Park has become a place where our marginalized and our citizens are in conflict. So does this solve the problem? Of course it doesn't. It doesn't. I mean, the Alliance on Homelessness started in 1997, I think. Here we are in 2023, and the problems are bigger, the number of homeless is larger. The Alliance has a two-pronged system, it's called coordinated access and a by-name list approach. You know, they're doing all they can. It's not enough, we know that. But this is a, in public relations, it's called a wicked issue because it's so complex, homelessness. So I, I think this is a step in trying to find, we're investing here, we're investing in some real items to help, help people when they need it, and to also create some reasonable fair limits, which I think are respectful of people. So, you know, I think what really it comes down to is, you know, City of Barry taking a real interest in trying to do something different, to be collaborative. And obviously, as part of this, the Alliance on Homelessness will be certainly a key partner in, in those, I mean, I like the term that Counselor Rittma gave to our CAO. But, you know, really to be able to really have that dialogue and look forward to the Community Safety Committee, and kudos to them for having that brought to their, their committee. And also, I think one of the other key items, I see the outreach, and I remember many years ago, the City of Midland did an outreach with, for homeless people downtown. Eventually, it was funded through one of the homeless initiative funds, and it was picked up by, I think, their downtown merchants for a while. And it did do, it did help. It was a part of the, kind of a steering committee oversight. So I'm hopeful that the downtown program will be helpful, getting people to support. But also, and recommend, just in maybe a comment that, and I've lost track, but over the years, there's been a number of programs funded through both mental health and addiction that have an outreach component. So I would encourage those that are involved in this from the city perspective and to really check in with our ministry-funded, Ministry of Health-funded organizations and Health Canada-funded organizations or those who are funded by the county. How much, how many FTEs or, you know, staff or do we have that are funded to outreach? And how can we coordinate those efforts? I remember years ago, I'm forgetting the name of the acronym, but there was, it was about the care team or Busby had a coordinated effort downtown with a number of organizations to do that work together. So I think the key is whatever we do, we need to do this together as all levels of government and citizens, organizations working together to help our most marginalized, and also to help our citizens enjoy parks. It's a, again, a shame that Queens Park has been an inflection point for those marginalized and those who want to enjoy the park with them as opposed to be removed from the park because of them. So let's, hopefully we can make that change and welcome our young baseball players back to Queens Park. Wouldn't that be nice? So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. There's nothing really I have to say other that hasn't been said, right? It's, I think somebody mentioned that there probably wouldn't be one person that supported everything full-hearted. And I, I think this is sometimes the challenge. It's, we come here and we try to do what's best for the city, and sometimes it's not always the most comfortable. But when we only do what makes us feel good in the warm and fuzzy way, it actually becomes a hindrance. So I, I think of like, the battle on the opioid crisis, and we always talk about the Portuguese model. And, you know, I had a conversation with somebody, and we have failures in our country with that because we take parts of the program, but we never look at it from tip to toe. And I think this motion actually gives, yeah, some awkward and uncomfortable conversation, but it's got a lot of positives, you know, to the point where we are entering into things like, we do not employ a single social service employee. And, and to, to take this and look at some of the challenges, and, you know, kudos to Mayor Nettle who's been working with all the partners on the phone, talking this over, comfort levels, and coming back and realizing the one common thing is the warming center and the cooling center. And, you know, putting that in and putting us in a lane that, that we're not normally in. And truth be told, there's something we heard from the county, it's not a common funded program, which used to be done by faith-based groups and stuff and organizations, where we understand it is a challenge in our population. And hopefully, by drawing people into some of the services, there's an opportunity to seek help and have that conversation. So I, I think it's great work. As you can hear some of the comments, yes, people are a little bit uncomfortable, but the support around this table is that what we're doing is not working, it's escalating in a negative way, and, and we're trying a new method. And, you know, I think we've given direction to our CAO, but, but very wide open to look at a lot of different options. And I, and I think that's going to be something that really makes this successful and not being very scriptive to, you know, putting you in a box. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Thompson. I've got quite a lot to say on this, and so you forgive me for taking a few minutes on it, but I want to start out by saying that what's being approved here tonight is not a definitive solution. We, I don't think there's anyone on the table who's saying that this is going to change anything overnight. We're giving We're giving the direction to our C O to do the best that our team at City Hall can do with an upset limit of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for two years and to pick and choose and to action or report back on items as we move forward. That's what we're doing. And Deputy Mayor Thompson just used, you know, some words in terms of boxing and I I think what we're doing is we're creating the space to try things and some of them are going to work and some of them are going to fail. But I come from a world in 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 my life, I look at things and certainly in the private sector, I look at things, when there's a problem, you name it, you work through it, you learn from defeats and you celebrate victories. And there's going to be quarterly reporting that does all of those things. There's going to be things that we learn along the way that we aren't even talking about right now. There's going to be items that we try and fail. There's going to be successes, but we're going to work through it and we have to work through it because our job is not to stand up for one segment of society. Our job's to manage a city, all segments of society. Our job is to empower individuals and it's to create opportunity. That opportunity needs to be for those who are hurting and need help and that opportunity needs to be for kids to be able to play in parks. It is our job to balance all of these interests and we're never going to hit all of the things and we're never going to have a home run every time, but we have to be able to balance the interests or we're failing as a city and we're failing as council. I think what we're trying to do right now is kind of do a course correction. Madam Clerk, I think that I'd like you to pull up some of the some of the photos and I, you know, don't want to get uh too alarmist here, but if you can scroll through to the next one. And the next one. Next one. I think there's one more. Like this is Sunnydale Park. This is Sunnydale Park. This is the former golf club turned into community park. This is on the trails that I used to run with my son and daughter while they were in strollers and I attempted to stay fit, eating too many of their crackers along the way. And that's what it's turned into. But that is not actually the biggest problem. And there's a cost to cleaning that up, yes, and there's, you know, we've had people dying intense because of trying to keep them heated and it going up in fire. And that's a terrible problem. But there's other problems. When I was door knocking last year, this is how far back this reaches for me, we got these pictures, what, two weeks ago, members of council, something like that, maybe three weeks ago? When I was door knocking last fall, I was over by the college just off Johnson Street and uh by Cheltenham and a lady was out front of her house and with her daughter and they were washing their Jeep and they said, you're you're running for mayor? I said, yeah. And they said, we wouldn't be usually voting for you. I said, well, that's nice, but we're voting for you this time. And I said, why? What's what's going on? She said, we need to do something. What happened? They were going for a run through Sunnydale Park when an individual started trying to lure a twenty-one-year-old young lady into a tent. The shocking part is not that. The shocking part is two weeks later, I was told at another door about a lady going for a walk in Sunnydale Park with her daughter and another fourteen-year-old and that exact same story. That's scary. And I don't want to be too alarmist, but to quote our C O who is probably going to be upset that I'm quoting him right now, that it can't just be compassion, it's not going to get us all the way. We need to have compassion, we need to have empathy. I talked about it in our opening statement, like we want to be over-the-top compassionate for people in this city, but we need to have a lawful, safe place to live as well. And that compassion needs to be extended to those who are hurting, who are homeless, who are fighting mental health issues, who are fighting addictions, and it needs to be an overtopped compassion for our young people as well. There's a, I think, another picture up here. Oh, one, maybe one more. Madam Clerk, I don't know if it made it. Oh, one more. A few more. It's the picture from the uh Queens Park. We're not going to see this anymore. The reason I I tried to search around to find this and one of our staff members found this on the city, it's actually a city-owned picture on the city website, but right now we're not going to see this, we're not going to see kids playing baseball, organized baseball at Queens Park. And I would offer you this, when we do see that again, we know that we've been successful. And I don't know that the things that we're passing tonight will result in that success, but I do know it's a start. It is uncomfortable without a doubt to say that the good works and the passions of some people need to be amended. It's uncomfortable because we know that these people are trying to help and trying to do what's good and right and honest and fair, but we have to do it in a way that's going to result in long-term help for these individuals who are experiencing these pains. That's why we're encouraging folks to give to our social service agencies rather than panhandlers. That's why we're asking that the food programs, which we're actually agreeing to help fund here tonight, which I never thought we would do, never thought that I'd support, being honest, I think I probably said in this council chamber between the election and now that I wouldn't, right? But we are because that's the right approach to do it, to do everything we can to help the individual who's hurting get the help from the organizations that are available. That's managing the city, that's creating opportunity, and that is certainly empowering individuals. So thank you, Members of Council, for building consensus around this. We're all going to get complaints from people in the next hour, okay? If you're not already getting them. And the complaints will be far and wide. You're spending too much money on this, you're not spending enough. There's not enough teeth in it. Why are you doing that? It should just be help, help, help. We're going to get those complaints. The good news is, I would offer that you direct them all to come out to the to the uh Community Safety Committee, to the public meeting, that we have that discussion as a community and there's going to be ideas that come in through that, there's going to be statements, there's going to be beliefs that we need to adopt, that we need to adapt to and that we need to move forward with. And that'll all come out in the wash over the next few weeks. Finally, I wanted to go through a couple of the items. Penetang Jail, we're looking at in this motion, the funding of helping individuals who are being released get back to where there's some supports for them, giving at least the opportunity for that. That's a great thing. Family reunification, and it's not just for family because in some cases, as Counsel Corser, you and I chatted, maybe the family's part of the reason that there's trauma, but finding those support structures that exist and being able to fund that reunification. Cooling and warmer warming center, it was the one common thing we hear from every single social service. I've met with Elizabeth Frye, John Howard, uh, we had Jennifer Van Genep from um, thank you, SCADA, I was going to an acronym and I was probably going the wrong one, so thank you, from SCADA, come and make a a deputation here, she actually came to that meeting, met with the Busby on a couple of occasions already, uh, we've spoken to tons of businesses and 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 people that care and are giving money and donating to these causes. And everybody is saying we need something and somewhere for folks to go. We're spending eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a potential eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year over two years. And we're creating a message and a standard that says, please give to social services. It'll literally, as you be coming off of the highway, it's please support our social services who have social workers, who have mental health professionals, who have uh addictions professionals so that they can help the people in our community. If there's one thing that we all know about Barry, it's that we take care of people who are hurting. Myself and many around this table have been the recipients of that love and I know that that will continue. The final piece, C O Prouse, we're not changing your title, okay? But I think that it actually, I think that it that this is a, and and I know it was said as a joke, right? But thi- but this is actually your job, C O. Your job is to take all of the ideas, hopes and and uh passions around this table and within our city and to put it into practicum. And I want you to know that not only am I incredibly happy and encouraged all the work that you and your team have done, because it's not just being yourself, but there's many individuals, but I have an immense trust that you're going to be able to find some successes for us along the way. And I know that you won't hide the failures or the or, you know, only talk about the successes, but I know there's going to be successes here that we haven't seen before and I can't wait for those for those wins and for the other opportunities to be found. With that, I'd like to uh call the vote on this matter and uh we will go from there. So all those in favor?
Recorded vote.
Recorded, yeah, recorded votes?
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, it passed, but you can go to record a vote, okay?
Well, since we know the outcome, I'll just go backwards anyways. Um, I'm going to start with Counselor Hamilton.
Yes.
Counselor Morales.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Negusi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Counselor Corser.
Yes.
Counselor Kungal.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Reetma.
Yes.
And Mayor Nettle.
Yes.
The vote carries.
Madam Clerk, uh, yes, Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Um, so we, I had a, I had an understanding that this may have taken hours and been a little bit more, um, so I'm going to introduce a quick motion without notice, I give you a very short heads up. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, notice, motion without notice, no parking on Mapleview Drive East pursuant to section seven point one of the procedural bylaw twenty nineteen dash one hundred, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning no parking on Mapleview Drive East. And speaking very quickly to it, it's extremely urgent and a huge liability, so I can explain it if this passes.
It's moved by Counselor Morales and seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that motion without notice, no parking on Mapleview Drive East pursuant to section seven point one of the procedural bylaw two zero one nine dash one zero zero, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning no parking on Mapleview Drive East. Uh, as there's no moments for questions or comments, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor with regards to the motion without notice? And it carries. Counselor Morales?
Stomach dropped there for a second. Um, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that traffic bylaw twenty twenty dash one oh seven, schedule one, no parking anytime be amended to restrict on-street parking on both sides of Mapleview Drive East from the Barry-Collingwood Railway bracket Beeden Railway Crossing and bracket to the twenty-fifth side road.
It's moved by Counselor Morales and seconded by Counselor Hamilton, the traffic bylaw two zero two zero dash one zero seven, schedule one, no parking anytime be amended to restrict on-street parking on both sides of Mapleview Drive East from the B C R Y crossing to the twenty-fifth side road.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle, and we can be quick on time, I know there's a presentation. So this issue came up in the fall, um, it was actually brought uh to my attention by Counsel Hamilton and there was, it's a Ward ten resident that brought it to our attention. Essentially, when the whining finished, there are some residents, not all, but some on the south side of Mapleview Ward nine that are purposely parking their street, their cars on the now five lanes and designed for a fast traffic road. Um, it's extremely dangerous. We tried to address it, it went away during the winter, it came back with a force, specifically in April, and uh I I, the mo- the wording of the motion actually comes from Monsieur Anne Sierin uh from Bella, and the, we were going to wait until June, we didn't want to get in the way of something that's important that we expected to come tonight, but it is every single day uh that this is occurring and it's a traffic of people commuting home. And again, this isn't your 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 two-lane road, this is essentially a mini highway and people, pretend someone's parking on Bayfield Street, I think that will summarize the understanding, so um we wouldn't have done a direct motion otherwise if it wasn't something that uh we want to address immediately as possible.
Thank you, Counselor Morales. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Corser.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, uh, what is the exact location of this? I'm trying to look it up and I'm.
So it'd be from the um railway tracks in Saint Paul on Mapleview Drive East down to the twenty-fifth side road, which is essentially the end of Mapleview Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, if you want to look, sorry, if I may quickly, uh, Mayor Nettle, to respond, if you want to look at your device, look at Goodwin and Mapleview Drive, that'll give you a rough idea.
You're going west of?
I was following language I got from staff. I, you're right, I think if it's twenty-fifth side road, I didn't want to meddle in Ward eight and seven.
I I think Mapleview Drive East, Counselor Morales, the, there's, there's actually two train tracks now, I'm thinking about, there's the Go tracks at Saint Paul, which I was just saying, which is I don't think identified in this. There's the B C R Y track, which is um at Huronia, between Huronia and Wellam Road. Is, that's a bridge, right? There's still train tracks, even though it's on a bridge. Uh, so which of the two sets of train tracks are we beginning at?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, the issue's occurring around uh Goodwin and Country Lane. So ideally, it would be to address no parking from east of Huronia all the way to as far as Counsel Hamilton is comfortable, but if I could get clarification, Bella, um, just on the language.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Morales, it is from the the B C R Y, so the uh all the way to um through Ward ten to the twenty-fifth side road. So it's that entire stretch.
It's essentially starting, starting between Huronia and Wellam and going all the way to the city boundary.
Correct.
Perfect. So it does, it does bleed up into Ward eight, but um I'll let, I'll let the counselor address if he has concerns.
Counsel Reetma.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Nettle. I just wanted to confirm with staff that they're in support of this, um, I'm assuming that they are, but uh just.
I said they wrote the motion.
I'm sorry?
I was very clear that they helped me, they wrote the motion.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Sorry, Counsel Morales, the, the, they can write the motion, but that doesn't necessarily mean they support the motion, so I think we should let staff answer the question.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Reetma, staff are supportive of this motion. Given that Mapleview Drive is a arterial road, uh, I think it would be normal for no parking on both sides of this road.
Wonderful, thank you. And Deputy Mayor Thompson?
No, I was just, uh, just confirming that, that's great, perfect.
Thanks. Uh, through you, Mayor Nettle, to the mover of the motion, um, was there an incident that happened in the last couple of days that's brought it to the direct motion, that you said there was a, this had occurred after the winter?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nuttall. I'm going to just defer the question, Deputy Mayor Thompson, to Counselor Hamilton. She's spoken a little bit more to this resident. I've been privy to the emails. It's one of those weird, it's occurring in my ward, but the person with more visible experience is in Ward 10.
Yes, and through you, Mayor Nuttall, I don't think it's limited to one person either. I think, as Balla made very clear, this is an arterial road, and you have cars parked, is the example that Counselor Morales provided. It'd be like having cars parked on Bayfield. It is a significant safety issue. I don't know of any, I would have to check with police reports in terms of any specific accidents, but there has been a number of near misses that have been brought to my attention. And so, that's why staff felt that it should be dealt with more immediate, as opposed to waiting to June. So, just given the time that was sort of available tonight, we thought we'd bring it tonight. But apologies for sort of springing on everybody, but I think just given the significance and potential for significant accidents to occur, we want to deal with this immediately.
This question's for staff. Was this possibly just an oversight after the construction because of the expansion of it being an arterial road from a two-lane to two lanes in both directions with a center median? Was this kind of a, something that should be in the traffic maintenance or standards that when we do a road widening, that automatically the no-parking signs go up?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Deputy Mayor Thompson, that's correct. I think this is something that was an oversight, and we should have been corrected.
Counselor Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall, and thank you for recognizing that some of this, a small portion of this is in Ward 8, and certainly, you know, a far less, if even a residential part of the street, so haven't noticed parking there, but it certainly makes sense that it be a no-parking clearly designated, so I support that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so, before we call the vote on this, or before I call the vote on it, I really do want members of council to use items for discussion. It sounds like this one came from the immediate need, and I get that, but what we don't want to have is 15, you know, items for discussion that aren't items for discussion because we're using them as direct motions every week. And so, I get, I understand, I get where it came from and how it's come, but just want to remind everybody that we do have some processes we can use with regards to these types of items, and I think it'll make it a lot cleaner and easier, too, as we're discussing it, because it gives everyone the time, it also gives everyone the wording and opportunity to look on a map, or even drive it if they so choose. With that being said, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? And it's approved. I think that that completes our motions, direct motions and motions without notice for the evening. I hope it does, at least. And we will now move on to presentations, and we have a very polite and patient friend here waiting for this evening. So, I now call upon Gary Scott, Vice President of Marketing for Napoleon, to come to the podium to provide a presentation this evening. Welcome to Barry City Council.
Thank you. With myself up here, your entire audience just left. Good evening, Mayor Nuttall and members of council. My name's Gary Scott. I'm the Vice President of Marketing for Napoleon. You know, with the warm weather upon us and a long weekend approaching, everywhere I go in the city, people ask me about barbecuing, so it's a very popular time of year for us. But tonight, I'm not here to talk about barbecuing, I'm here to talk about sustainability, and I'm here, on the request of council, to talk about the best practices and the highlights that Napoleon has had as a large employer in Barry in the areas of sustainability. We recognize as a major employer that our residents expect us to be responsible in this area and set a good example, which we do. And we're really proud of the work that we've done, and we're not going to stop, there's lots more to do. So, I'm delighted to be here with you tonight to talk about what we've accomplished and what we're working on in the future. So, with that, I will jump into a very brief presentation. So, when you talk about sustainability, it really starts with the consumer. I was inspired by the basketball team I saw here earlier this evening, because it's young kids in the home are the ones that are demanding, you have to do better. We hear that from consumers when it starts at home. And our goal as a manufacturer is to making sure that we're looking out into the future to make sure that we're leaving as small of a footprint on the environment as we can. And that's not just local in Barry, which I'm going to talk about, but also the products that we innovate and create for consumers around the world. So, I talk about what we're doing right here in our neighborhood. Napoleon's been engaged in a lot of activities to make sure that we have left the minimal footprint we can, despite the large scale of our, and growing scale of our operations. Whether it's fabricating products, diverting waste when we do make waste, minimizing it as much as possible, and also being more efficient in our electricity consumption, those are just a few of the big areas that we focus on because they can have a real impact. And we put some numbers to that. If you look at 2021 versus 2022, the full year, this is on a per-unit basis, so it's not like we just turn down the manufacturing volume and we get the savings. This is done on a, you know, a cost-per-unit or a savings-per-unit basis. You can see there's been significant decreases in some of the areas where we would have an impact on the environment, right from saving electricity to waste diversion. And again, it really comes down to being smart in all areas of our business, because we know if we can be responsible for the environment, we can actually save some costs doing it. So, there's a real financial benefit, as well as a community benefit. A lot of numbers on the page here, but when you look at the amount of waste and you actually put a hard number to it, we've saved just over 26,000 metric tons. Now, I'm not sure how many dump trucks, or however you want to quantify that, but it's a lot of stuff that we otherwise don't want to go into the landfill, or don't want to go into the environment to begin with. And the Ontario Government did a study around this, and when you do the math on what we've saved, they would say that that's created also 186 jobs somewhere in the province. So, that is their math, but again, it comes back to good business. It's good for the environment, but it's also good for our economy when we can reduce waste and make a positive impact on the environment. We've been recognized a number of different ways for the work that we're doing, but we don't just look for awards to put. In our trophy case, we look for best practices that we can apply, and we look to share what we can with others, so other businesses locally can look at what we're doing and learn from it, hopefully apply, and get the same results that we're seeing. Just this week, we were recognized, sorry, last week, we were recognized as one of Canada's best managed companies for the 11th year in a row. We're now at the top of the list, we're a platinum best managed company, but one of the big metrics of that is being environmentally sustainable. And thinking of what we're talking about tonight with sustainability wins, you know, that factors into that amongst all the other things that we do. And we're involved in a number of other associations where we have made an effort to say we want to be recognized and share our learning and share our best practices with others. So, it's not just us, but it's the whole community and the whole industry that wins. Now, I'm not here to sell you barbecues in any way, but I did want to share with you some of the great work that local residents are doing, and what we're doing in our research and development efforts at Napoleon, that not just benefit by creating jobs locally, but also create products that are being sold around the world and getting a lot of, you know, really, really good attention. So, our goal is to take the number of units of products that we make, and for those of you who are not familiar with our company, we make not just barbecues, but we make hearth products, as well as heating and air conditioning. Most of those are made right here in Barry. And our goal is to make sure that our portfolio continues to grow with more efficient products. And our target is about 250% increase from when we started that goal three years ago to finish up in 2025, and we're on track to get pretty close to that. So, one of the things that we're most proud about, we've just created this unit you see here, it's a fully electric grill, so today, most people use a propane or a gas-powered grill. This one does all of the same things, however it runs on electricity. And that's a first, so the first full-size electric grill was actually made here in Barry. Years from now, you'll be playing a board game, and that'll come up as a trivia question. You'll all be able to answer this one correctly now. So, the first electric grill was designed by our research and development arm right here in Barry. And the real benefit of it is, and I was shocked when I saw the pictures earlier today about the pollution in parks, getting rid of propane cylinders and eliminating that from the environment is one big step in the right direction. And of course, pellet girls, which are quite common, relying on cutting down trees, which also is not a sustainable practice when you're removing fruit-bearing, food-bearing trees from the environment to create a flavored pellet. So, we see this as a major step forward in making our planet that much more environmental, environmentally friendly. The other one, which is very current, is our work in the area of heat pump and air-handling technology. And while I could spend all night talking about all the great benefits in the technology of heat pumps, I don't think that would be the right use of the council's time today. However, back on, a week and a half ago, back on May 2nd, we had a great presentation and an announcement here by the Ontario Government, where the Ontario Clean Home Energy Initiative was launched here in Barry. It's one of five cities that will benefit from this program. And to simplify the program, what this is, is a government grant that will allow homeowners, homeowners in Barry, to take a heat pump and a smart thermostat and combine it into a system that allows them to have a primarily electric-heated home and air-conditioned home, and get a financial incentive to make that conversion. Napoleon's leading the way in that technology. We're one of the companies that has done the most amount of work in this area. And of course, that work is being done by our research and development team, again, here in Barry. And this is something that has really taken hold. Consumers are fascinated by this technology. When I mentioned heat pumps a few years ago, very few people would understand it. Now, you're seeing it in the news quite often. So, again, another thing that's happening locally, that'll have a big impact on reducing the consumption of electricity for the residents of Barry, as well as saving money and reducing greenhouse gases. And then a few other things that seem small. If you have an older gas fireplace in your home, you may have one of the ones that has a blue flame in it when you're not using it. That's the pilot light, so it's ready to light when you flick the switch. That's just wasting gas. Napoleon created the first, what we call, on-demand technology. So, in other words, you don't have the flame when you're not using it, but it lights up without having that. So, again, you're not wasting gas, wasting money, keeping the fireplace ready, especially in the off-season. And last but not least here, we've switched a lot of our products, or started to switch over to electric fireplaces. Consumers are looking for alternatives to fossil fuels, not just in their cars, and also, we talked earlier about the barbecue, but also with their home and the fireplace. You now have electric fireplaces that give you the ambience of a fire, but not using and burning the fossil fuels that are associated with a traditional gas fireplace. So, if I wrap up here, you know, I started by saying, we listen to what consumers are looking for. We try to make their life better, better because we provide a product that works better for them, but it works better because it's sustainable, saves the money, reduces greenhouse gas. It's the future of, you know, what sustainable companies should be doing, and we feel like we're on the forefront and getting recognized regularly for it. We're still going to keep pushing ahead. But the important part is, we're seeing the benefits right here in Barry. It's creating jobs for our local residents, having the government extend a program to the city of Barry, I think is a massive step forward for Barry being on the leading edge of technology like that. So, it's a real feather in the cap to this city to be able to get an extension of a program like that and be one of the first. And we know it's good for the environment, it's good for business, and when I think about where consumers are going, this is the type of technologies they're looking for. So, we're excited to be on the forefront of this, and I'm proud to share what the company's been able to do, not just reduce waste in our operations, but also bring products that are being seen around the world as something that is on the front edge of technology. So, with that, I'll pause here and be free to answer any questions about the company or our practices on sustainability.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for the presentation. And over the years, we've seen Napoleon grow, but we've also seen Napoleon, you know, push the industry in a really good direction. Industries, actually, because you have such a range of products. So, we're incredibly proud that you're here in Barry. We're incredibly proud that it started here in Barry, and certainly proud of all the work you're doing in terms of innovations related to environmental sustainability, both inside your footprint, but also around the world with the products you're producing. I'm going to open it up for questions from members of council, if that's okay with you. And Deputy Mayor Thompson would like to lead the way here.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nuttall. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Scott. And, you know, you're a much smarter man than me, but I will tell you, if you show up with a barbecue, there are more people may have stayed in the gallery to hear your presentation. But that's just an opinion. I want to thank you. You know, we did have an announcement, and some of it could have to do with the proximity to your factory, because you guys, your innovation, and do you feel that we support you enough that if there is an expansion in your business, that we're contributing to that? There's serviceable lands, and there's eligibility for the expansion of Napoleon? Because you're a great community partner, a great employer, and you're leading the way in a lot of, you know, initiatives. So, I'm just curious to see if you feel that, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure that you can expand to the...
You know, on behalf of the management team, I have not heard an issue come up that says you're holding us back from something that we would like to do. Now, having said that, if we had a broader discussion around what else could we possibly do, working together with you to help our business grow, I know we would come up with other ideas, but to answer your question directly, I'm not aware of anything you're doing to hold us back, and we appreciate the support we've had from council over the years, and we feel like we have a good relationship with the council as we have in the past and going forward. So, I feel very optimistic about any initiative we bring forward to you, we're going to get the support as we have in the past.
Well, thank you.
Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Mr. Scott, I'm aware that in the United States, the Biden Administration passed some legislation incentivizing manufacturers such as yourselves to improve heat pump technology, specifically cold-climate heat pump technology. I'm a nerd in this stuff, by the way. I really like this kind of, I like innovation, whether it's EVs or this. So, heat pumps are the future. Like, I personally believe, like, there should be no more gas installations of furnaces moving forward and new installs, and this kind of innovation is the future. But climates like Barry get interesting, because the heat pumps need that auxiliary the way you have it in your graphic right now. Here's my question. So, the Biden Administration kind of created an arms race with manufacturers in the US to develop better cold-climate heat pumps that can function better in minus 15 or colder weather, because right now, most, and I don't know your product, but specifically, but most heat pumps start to have difficulty around the minus 14, 15. So, my question to you is, is Napoleon currently working on cold-climate heat pump technology?
Napoleon is absolutely engaged, and more so than probably any other company in cold-climate technology. And think about it, look where we live. So, if anyone can do it, it's going to be done here. But the reason we're so focused on it, more so than other companies, is when you think about the needs for a cold-climate heat pump, it's specific to colder climates. So, the northern part of the US, obviously, most of Canada, this is the area where there's the biggest demand. Some other manufacturers are focused on other areas of the United States, but as an example, but don't have this as the highest priority for them. Being a Canadian company and having expertise in cold-climate technology, it's something that we're on the leading edge of, because, you know, it's in our best interest because of the communities that we serve, mostly along, you know, most along the northern border of the US and throughout Canada. So, to answer your question, our products do work in a wide range of temperatures. Temperature has to go extremely cold for it to not work, and our operating range is very much within typical Canadian households' climate.
Perfect, that's incredible. And just as a closing comment, I know there were two companies from media reports, I don't have any insider knowledge, that were able to hit like the minus 26. One company, apparently, in the US was able to produce a product, and that was up to minus 33. And they did peer review, so they said they did it, and it wasn't just a lab, they submitted it to some universities in the Biden Administration, and it was ratified. But what I am confident, Mayor Nuttall, is, once the technology gets there, it's Napoleon that's going to be leading the way, specifically for Ontario and this northeastern region. So, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Counselor Corser?
Good evening, through you, Mayor Nettle, to our guest. I'm just wondering, with the labor climate we have right now, the issues that we have securing, most industries have securing labor, I'm wondering what challenges you may be having and are you able to, are you finding ways to overcome them? And is there any way that you could find supports with, from the city?
Like all companies in our, our industry with ma, in all industries with manufacturing, finding, finding labor continues to be a challenge. We have found it easier in recent months. I don't know what's exactly driving that. It's the economy picks up and there's more needs for manufacturing, there are more jobs becoming available. We have been able to meet our manufacturing needs with our local talent. Having said that, it is still a challenge, less so today than it was even three months ago, we're seeing with our hiring. So it's getting better. I, I didn't hear the second, the last part of your question, I think it was related to, is there something more that we could, you could do to help us?
Yes, there's something more we could, as the city, assist you with. And are you finding that there's a lot of turnover, not for many fault, of course, of Napoleons, but just like the general market as it is now, the labor market as it is now?
I don't have a specific ask for you tonight in terms of what we, what you could do to help. What we, we have had is good support with the local businesses in terms of when we do have job vacancies, we posted in all the sites that are possible, not just through our own, our own corporate site, but there's some local registries where we can say we have a need for people and that's been very effective to help us get work. So I think our needs are, are well met today, but I have no doubt we'll reach out if we, if we need help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Corser, and Counselor Kangal.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nettle, to Mr. Scott. Nice to see you back in chambers. It was a lovely celebration with the announcement and the news of the hybrid model. A piece that I guess I have a question about, and as we've connected with residents around the conversion to electric on different things, electric vehicles being one piece and always hearing about misinformation out there and how we can engage residents in messaging. And when you were talking about, and it was very exciting to see the electric barbecue and the kind of promotion of fireplaces, is there any public communication that we can help promote or we should be aware of that helps people understand the benefit of converting from gas to electric and/or the ability to make changes in your home? So is the cost worth it, as usually the common piece? So I didn't know, you know, are, is a lot of the changes that are being made and really being taken up by individuals that are looking at designing new homes, new spaces, and incorporating that type of design and investment upfront? Or is it affordable? Or is, is there an incentive to actually taking the time to convert out a gas fireplace for an electric fireplace? And are your products in some way easily able to actually help individuals make that switch without massive redesign?
The question you ask is such a good one because as a consumer, it's, it's not an easy topic to wrap your mind around. If, if, if you are really into this area and you research it often, it's an easy choice. But for most people, when they go to buy an electric fireplace or a fireplace of any sort, or new heating or air conditioning system, the last time they did it probably was measured in years and if not, you know, several years. So technology has changed since then. What we do as a manufacturer is try to educate the consumers as well as the trade that installs them to say, there's local benefits available now and certainly in Barrie, they are available where they, they weren't two weeks ago and they, they weren't in the past. So there's local incentives to help do that. And here's education that you, as an installer, need to be able to share with a consumer who has really no idea what they, they need until they need it. And often, if you think about, if you've ever had an issue where your, your heating's broken down or your air conditioning's broken down, the window for you to decide what you want to do is usually measured in, how fast can I get it replaced because I'm too cold or I'm too hot? So our, our goal is to, to put that information in the hands of the people that can help the consumer the fastest. So that could be as a manufacturer, having good information on our website, but the local installing, installers who are able to answer those questions and figure out what their needs are and provide the solution, that's where we're spending most of our effort. I do think there's an opportunity, both with the government and perhaps local government as well, to help share that, that energy efficiency message and what are some of the options? I don't know what avenues there are to tap into all of that, but that would be something, is it, I'll say, a third leg of the stool, so to speak, to help consumers who are thinking, well, should I, should I make a retrofit change or should I consider this when I, when I need to? Where do, where do they turn for information? Having a government source would be seen as very, very credible, very reliable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Kangal, and we'll now have Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. The beginning of what I have to say is going to probably sound like a Napoleon infomercial, but I can honestly say in my lifetime, I've had several barbecues and until I finally got my hands on a Napoleon, then I realized the difference and, and I definitely would not go anywhere else, so much so that at my full-time job, they were looking at buying a barbecue. I won't say what brand, but it was not Canadian-made. And I was like, why would you even consider buying that when we've got manufacturing forty minutes up the road and buy something Canadian? And thankfully, they couldn't get their hands on the American one, so there is a Napoleon barbecue at my full-time workplace also. To, to Counselor Morales's point, because I, I was too at the, at the press launch here and, and because I live in a house that's twenty-four years old, basically both my AC and my air conditioning unit is getting right to that point, and I'm probably going to jinx myself by even talking about it tonight, but, so I've done an extensive amount of research after we left here that day. And, and even that, like NS nineteen, NS eighteen model that you have in your slideshow is a cold-climate unit that's good for minus thirty by the, by the looks of it. Where I'm going with this, though, is right now it still has some reliance, obviously, on, on natural gas. Do you envision with your technology team that the day will ever come where the gas piece of it will be totally removed? Whether it's supplemented by an electric furnace or just a much larger heat pump that would be able to do the job in the climate that we have?
Absolutely. And in fact, a heat pump will, in theory, could work down to absolute zero. There's still heat to be taken out of the air. Absolute zero is about minus two hundred and seventy-two degrees. So we have cold days here in Barrie, it doesn't get that cold, though. But what changes, though, is the colder it gets, the efficiency of the heat pump starts to decline. So if you live in an area where it's very cold, having a gas furnace allows you better efficiency because on the coldest days of the year, a gas furnace provides greater efficiency than a heat pump that's working harder to extract the, the hot air out of the, the cold air, if I'm trying to simplify a complicated process. But you, you could, in theory, run a heat pump right to a very low temperature in most Canadian cities. It just wouldn't be as, as efficient as you would like. So for that reason, we often say, depending on the exact area you live in, you'd have a gas alternative, an electric alternative with the heat pump, and use a smart thermostat, which is what the Ontario Clean Home Initiative is, is all about, that says, well, based on the temperature and the price, the most efficient option for you is to use the heat pump up to this point and then may switch you to a gas, the gas heating for the best efficiency for the coldest days of the year. But you, you could eliminate the gas. In most cities in Canada, you could eliminate the gas altogether and use, use a heat pump.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I was just kind of curious where potentially we could be going with this. I know obviously the more electrical stuff that we start using and really rely on, it puts pressure on the grid and we've been here and Ontario Hydro doesn't really have any grandiose plans of adding any major line improvements in the next little while. So I guess it's that fine balance, too, as we try to get greener as we move forward. But thank you for your presentation and I'm sure there's probably going to be some more Napoleon products in my house in the near future.
Fantastic, thank you.
I was, I was actually going to ask, are you asking for, you asking for a discount there, Counselor Harvey? That wouldn't be appropriate. Government grants, there you go. That's how you get the discount. Are there any other questions on the table? Seeing none, I really want to say thank you for coming out tonight, for taking the time. I know that you obviously have a very busy schedule. And, and it was actually a conversation with, with Chris that resulted in tonight's, tonight's presentation. You know, the question that was just asked by Counselor Harvey, one of the interesting things that Electra, our local utility, is working on with the provinces is what is the path forward and is there a single answer? And I think you, you basically answered it for us, but what the UK is, is doing is it's a, it's a multi-solution where we need our electric utilities to be working with our gas utilities to find the most efficient way forward. And that's exactly what the announcement was, a week and a half ago here. And so I think we're on the right path, we're at the cutting edge for Ontario, being on the right path, but there's many other jurisdictions around the world that are ahead of us. And really do want to say thank you for manufacturing in our city and around our city, because not just here, it's also in Orem and Dante. And, and also for putting some of the pressure on to be able to get last week's announcement in terms of, of lobbying for the government for it and also for our staff who spent the time and effort to, to do that. I think it's a great news story and obviously ends up having a lot more of your products sold locally, which, which we'd like to see.
Mayor Nettle and members of council, thank you very much for your, your ongoing support for our company and also for listening tonight. It's been a real honor and a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, sir. And if you leave, we're down to zero. There's no one left.
Very good. Thank you again.
You too, thank you. That concludes our presentations for this evening. We're now at inquiries. Deputy Mayor Thompson, do you have any inquiries?
I have none, thank you.
Any other members of council have inquiries? Counselor Kangal?
Thank you through you, Mayor Nettle, to Mr. Bell. Just through the quick correspondence to the benefit of members of council and myself, could you provide an update on the status of the sports grant and what might be rolling out? I know we've been getting, I've been getting some questions at certain committees. Some agencies are kind of looking ahead, saying, worst-case scenario, do we have to pivot to apply to an Ontario Trillium grant by June fourteenth? Hoping you could share what the timing is for people to expect an announcement about the allocation.
Sorry, sorry, through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Kangal, wrong button. The process we used last year was, we sent a memo to council indicating who got awarded the grants from the Recreation Support Community Grant. And the very next day, we sent notices to all the successful applicants. There is a memo coming to council, to General Committee, actually, on May thirty-first. And on June the first, all successful applicants will be notified. Direction was given to the Manager of Business Services this week to advise all applicants of that schedule and I'll ensure that that's been done.
Thank you for the update.
Are there any other queries around the council table? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
I have none, thank you.
Any other announcements around the table, Counselor Kangal?
I've got two announcements. So thank you, Mayor Nettle. One is, it's that time of year when usually we're getting questions about boulevard trees, specific to Ward Three. For those on Osprey Ridge Road, the update, because we know we had a lot of removal in the fall due to the ash-bore beetle. For those that have been expecting their tree, the status update is that we are on track, as planned, to have that planting done by the end of the month of May. Activity can start as early as next week. So please watch for that while you were engaged on your tree species and notice that that would be happening. You should still see a door hanger or a communication around the, the day that the change will take place for planting of those trees. So thank you to staff and forestry for following up on that and engaging residents in the fall. I know I was limited on communications, of course, with the election, but great to see the approach that staff took with that area that saw a, a large devastation of the loss of boulevard trees. So my appreciation for that. My second announcement and thanks to staff in transit and communication, so to Brent and Rebecca for supporting an opportunity that came forward through the Bay Cats. So I have sponsored through collaboration with them, free transit bus, dedicated bus route to the Bay Cats game for the following three. I'm hoping this is an opportunity for residents across many wards to check out the route with several stops tied to, I believe, our Allendale Recreation Centre downtown around the Transit Terminal and also inward through the East Bayfield Community Centre. So if you've got a Bay Cats ticket or are heading to the game and can communicate that, you can jump onto a dedicated transit that will take you to the game and back. So the three that have a dedicated bus are Thursday, May eighteenth, which is tomorrow, the opening game. If you find me on the bus, which you will, and you chat me up about some of our programs and services, I will be giving out some gift cards to our East Bayfield Community Centre in promotion of public transit, active transportation, and also our rec facilities. The other one, just to share for those, if you might want to engage friends and colleagues or areas of focus, Thursday, May twenty-fifth is the Bay Cats Theme Night for healthcare providers and first responders. And on July the twentieth, the Thursday night, it is Military Night, so hoping to get that word out through the Legion and to Bay Spordan. It's a lovely night and many other themes are happening on Thursdays throughout the season, so check out the Barry Bay Cats. And yeah, wishing them a good season ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Kangal, and now Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle, and through you. Just a quick update that the, the Ward Ten Advisory Council will be meeting tomorrow night at seven PM to eight fifteen at the Old West Wing on Prince William Way. It is an open meeting, so any Ward Ten residents that would like to join us, you are more than welcome to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton. Are there any other announcements for this evening? Seeing none, I would like to proclaim the week of May twenty-eighth to June third as National Accessibility Week. I'm pleased to announce that the city's official mobile app is being featured in the Information and Privacy Commissioner of Ontario's Transparency Showcase published at transparencyshowcase.ipc.on.ca. I'd like to congratulate staff in the information, technology, and communications who worked together to develop the new City of Barrie app, which launched in April twenty-twenty-two. So Rebecca and your team, thank you and congratulations. Please pass that on to your team. The city's annual street sweeping has begun. Residents are encouraged not to push debris into the roadway. Large piles of sand or salt cannot be picked up by the street sweeper. For further information on updates, please visit barry.ca/street sweeping. Registration is now, some of the names on their websites, it's getting me. Registration is now open for summer recreation programs. For further information or to register online, please visit play.barry.ca or in person at the Allendale Recreation Centre, East Bayfield Community Centre, or Peggy Hill Community Centre. The Barry Air Show will be returning to the skies over Kempfelt Bay on June tenth and eleventh. The event will feature fun programming, all-weekend-long demonstrations, and the iconic Canadian Forces Snowbirds. There'll also be a viewing of the latest Top Gun down at Meridian Place. So for more information, please visit barry.ca-airshow. And during that viewing, or just prior to, we'll also have the pilots from the Snowbirds down there able to meet with young people in the community, which I think is a really neat opportunity for, for the young people in Barrie. The City of Barrie will be recognizing and celebrating National Indigenous Month and National Indigenous Peoples' Day during the month of June, supporting and collaborating with community partners to provide opportunities for residents to learn and celebrate the unique diverse cultures and the contributions of First Nations, Inuit, and Mat peoples. For further information and a list of activities, visit barry.ca/nationalindigenoushistorymonth. June is Seniors Month and twenty-twenty-three marks the thirty-ninth anniversary of celebrating seniors and the tremendous contribution they make to the vitality of the City of Barrie. The city's Park View and Allendale Fifty-five Plus Centres will be hosting events throughout the month of June. And for further information or a list of activities, please visit barry.ca/seniors55plus. The city is now conducting its third annual business and employer data survey. City employees will be going door-to-door and engaging with businesses located in the city's commercial and industrial areas. The data collected will be used to update the city's online business directory and monitor economic trends, support business retention, expansion, and forecast infrastructure needs. It will also assist with transportation planning. For further information, please visit investbarry.ca/beds or to complete the survey online, visit buildingbarry.ca/businessdata. The deadline for the survey is September the thirtieth. Applications are now being accepted for the city's License Two Ride Program, offering Barry... Barry youth age 12 to 16 free rides on Barry Transit and access to free recreational opportunities at the city's community centers from July 1st to September 4th. For further information, please visit barry.ca/license2ride. Nominations are now open for the fifth annual Mayor's Innovation Awards. The awards celebrate the year's most creative solutions for businesses, individuals, and local community groups. The theme this year is beyond the new normal. Nominations are open to Barry businesses, organizations, and individuals from all sectors, stages, and sizes. The submission deadline is May 28th. For further information, please visit investbarry.ca/innovationawards. With the recent approval of the city's new official plan, the city is now seeking feedback on the first draft of the citywide urban design guidelines. Residents, businesses, developers, and other stakeholders are invited to review the draft document and share feedback. The deadline to submit is, comments is on June the 16th. For further information, visit Barry, sorry, visit buildingbarry.ca/urban design. Due to the Victoria Day long weekend, there are, by reference or general committee meetings are scheduled for May 24th. Meetings will resume on the 31st with Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee and General Committee. Sorry, there are no reference or general committee meetings. We are now done the announcements and we'll move into the bylaws. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills and these bills be read a first, second, third, and finally passed Bill 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, and 56.
You're just showing off there, Deputy Mayor Thompson. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Nixon. The leave be granted to introduce the following bills and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed Bill 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, and 56. Are there any comments or questions with regards to these bills? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Leave be granted to introduce this, and this bill and read a first, second, and third time and finally passed Bill 57.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Nixon. The confirmation bylaw, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed Bill 57. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the bill? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counsel Rittman, seconded by Counselor Corser. All those in favor, it carries, and we are adjourning at 9:00.